We're still missing a few more people. Alright, so Ms. Davis is down there, so I'm ready if you're ready.
Folks, we could have your attention and come back to order for our next docketed item, and I'll call on Ms. Nunn to read our next docket, please.
Docket PZ-19-011, public hearing regarding the adoption of the updated Odom County Comprehensive zoning ordinance.
Alright, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Urban. He's going to kind of outline the process and procedures that we have been going through for quite some time, several months here, and as to exactly how we ended up here today, and what the consideration will be, and what we're going to try to get approved here shortly through our process, through the Planning Commission, and then this today, what we do, then that recommendation will go to the legislative bodies, which is fiscal court in the three cities that make up the planning unit in Odom County for their consideration here in the next couple of months. So with that, Mr. Urban, I'll turn it over to you and let you kind of explain what's going on.
Great, thank you. And good morning, Commissioners. As Kevin said, we're probably at year, going into year three on redoing the zoning ordinance. We've been at this quite some time, but this is the last segment of our recommendations to overhaul our zoning ordinance. You all remember that there is a Study Review Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission, and we've been meeting at least once a month. Sometimes we skip a month depending on what's going on in terms of other workload, or whether we have reviews of information available. The Study Review Committee members are Mr. Jeffries, the Chair, he's also the Chair of the Study Review Committee, Bob Klingenfuss, Mary Ann Smith, Greg King, Ed Halfling, and I think we're still looking for a sixth member. Typically at our meetings, they are public meetings, so we do have a kind of a rotating group of people that come to our meetings. We have non-voting members. In the past, it's been Mayor Diible from Crestwood, and now Mayor Kramer is available to come. John Black is the mayor of La Grange, and then Bob Rogers, the mayor of Peewee Valley. Those are the legislative body members, other than fiscal court, that will hear the recommendations from the Planning Commission. So as stated, this is a public hearing to go over the recommendations of the Study Review Committee, and then they'll go on to the legislative bodies. Other people that have attended the SRC meetings on a regular basis, I won't go through everybody's name, but we've had input from the Building Industry Association, from the Tourism Bureau, citizens at large, we've had some experts that have come and helped us with some information, particularly about distilleries and barrel warehouses, and occasionally citizens that are interested in our process. Most recently, we started in January of 2018 with the, this segment of the update of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, and so today, we had a public meeting on the 25th of May for going over and reviewing these recommendations. The point that we're at today is that we, on the 23rd last week, we had a Study Review Committee, and they went over all the public comments, and so today you're hearing those comments, along with our recommendations through this process. Just quickly, if you remember, we have a comprehensive plan, and we adopted that last in February of 2014, and we're at the five-year mark on that, so as soon as we finish this, we're going to be updating the comprehensive plan, and I've assigned Tom McIntyre to lead as a staff member of the update of the comprehensive plan, and we'll go over that at a next meeting. After you have a comprehensive plan, you then do all the regulations related to those recommendations, goals, and objectives in the comprehensive plan, and so that's what we're working on today, is the zoning ordinance. We also have subdivision regulations, which we have a couple of modifications for, and then various ordinances that are part of what we have to enforce in the county. These are all the topics that are going to be discussed today. Some of them are very short and easy, but the entire list is in front of you, and I think you'll also have those printed out. Amy had made copies of them, and so I'm going to actually turn it over to Amy at this point, and she's going to go through the recommendations. What I would suggest we do is that we take each one of these divisions separately and ask questions after each part, and then go through and adopt them after we make changes, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, good morning, everyone. Amy Alvey, Assistant Director, Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Mr. Urban stated, this is a comprehensive review of the sections listed here. So in your package, you will see anything that is in blue, that should be as an addition. If it is in red, it is a strike-through, that's how we have it loaded in our PowerPoint presentation. But with some of the documents, there's been several modifications, there may be other color changes on there as well, but we'll go over those as we go through. So the first section that we're going to go over is Division 330, Exceptions and Modifications. We are removing items number four and number five, and again, all of this will be reformatted, so the numbers may be different. So on your actual document that you have, if the spacing's not good, or anything of that nature, it will be reformatted. So the formatting is not really under the purview today, but anyway, we removed item number four and number five. Number four is the buildable width of a corner lot, which is recorded at the time of the adoption of these regulations, shall not be reduced less than to 32 feet by application of the required side yard on the street side. Nothing in this section shall be construed to allow reduction of any other required side yard. Not really sure what all that means, we've never used that, never implemented that in any of our plan reviews or anything of that nature, so I'm not sure what the intention of that was, so we are removing that one. And then number five, it says where dwelling units are erected above and as subordinate used to, commercial and industrial structures and commercial and industrial districts, and each dwelling unit has openings to the outside only on the front and rear, and there is more than two rooms in depth, no side yard is required except such side yard as may be required in the district regulation for a commercial or industrial building on the same side of a lot adjoining a residential district. Again, none of this has ever been implemented in any type of building permit process, it would have to be reviewed, obviously, for commercial and residential structure, combination use, to meet building code. So that's, we're just removing this, and then we would implement any type of required building code requiring ingress and egress to the structure. We did add item number five, it says when a commercial or industrial zone property abuts residential zoned property, the setback must be observed, that of the adjacent property, the more restrictive setback applies. So in the event that you have a commercial property abutting a residential property, the more restrictive setback applies. That just protects property rights of the less restrictive property. And then we removed, on the next one, it says on any corner lot in all districts, except C1 Local Business District, there shall be no obstruction of traffic visibility within 35 feet of the intersection of the two street property lines of the corner lot. I'm not sure why C1 was an exception to the rule, but we want to ensure that there is adequate site distance for all properties, so we're removing that except in C1 off of that, so we ensure that, you know, the traffic coming in and out will have, you know, clear sightlines. So that is the section there, removing the except C1 Local Business District. And then Section 330-060, we just cleaned up a little bit of the grammar on it, rather than District, it says without sewer, we just put proper sanitary facilities, and approved by the appropriate agencies, because we do have multiple serving agencies now, so rather than calling them out by the actual agency name, we're just kind of generalizing it by saying appropriate agency. And in the second paragraph, it says a property owner can build on existing platted lots of less than one acre if the health department approves sewage treatment and the lot size and proposed building otherwise meet zoning district requirements. And then it says all plans for sewage disposal must be approved by County Health Department Officer of the Kentucky Division of Water and any other state or federal agency deemed appropriate by the commission and/or Board of Adjustments. All of this is part of the building permit review process, so it's not needed in the So that is all on Division 330-06, I'm sorry, Division 330, Exceptions and Modifications.
With that, you've heard what's being proposed here. We'll open it up now for any comments, or any suggestions, or proposed changes, and we'll consider those under these at one at a time, and if there are proposed changes, and then at the end, we'll come and vote on it as a package. Is that correct, Mr. Urban?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, any additions, corrections, changes that people want to consider at this point? Mr. Douglas?
Number seven.
Your mic on, sir.
Number seven.
Okay, let me pull that out.
I have a line going across mine. Is that for a reason? Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
It's not, that's not the typical strike-through.
Uh-oh.
And I'm done. Thank you so much.
Alright, any additions or corrections, or anything that you'd like to see added or changed? Okay, seen none, and this also goes for anyone in the audience that is here. If you all have any suggested changes or questions, you know, you certainly can come forward at this time, and we'll address them one section at a time. Alright, seen none on Division 330, Exceptions and Modifications. We will now move into Division 360.
Sure. So Division 360, specific to water supply and sewage disposal, so 330-060, oh, sorry, I went the wrong way, is, 360 is building permits and fees. So again, this is just some grammatical updates where it says, no building or other structure shall be erected, moved, added to, or structurally altered without a permit issued by, it says administrative official. The county building and inspection department is actually who issues the building permit. So we struck administrative official there, and then it says no building permit shall be issued by the administrator, except for conformity with provisions of this regulation, unless the administrator, and we, again, we struck the word administrator, and it says county building and inspections department, because again, those are the people that actually sign off. Mark Tice, our chief building inspector, signs off on the building permits and not the administrator. And then in the second paragraph, it says if no building permit has been issued, and a builder or individual begins or continues to build after a stop-work order has been issued, so we are adding that language in there, a restraining order may be obtained upon application to the proper court of record, and evidence of the lack of a building permit shall establish, prima facie, a case for the issuance of a restraining order. So previously, we did not have the step of saying that we would issue a stop-work order, because we have had the instance where stop-work orders have been issued, and they were actually drawwalled over. So we didn't have anything in our regulations that said that we would pursue a restraining order through the regular process. So we're adding in the language of after a stop-work order has been issued. On this, is building permit procedure, it says prior to the issuance of a building permit, all checklist items on the application must be completed and submitted to the county building and inspections department. So everything that's highlighted there in red with a strike-through goes through the individual departments. We have a check-off sheet that is on the front of every building permit application, and since I've been back in county government for the last, I guess, almost eight years now, we have added about four different items to that. So it's a changing document. So we didn't really want to put specifics in the zoning ordinance that says you must have this, you must have that, because, you know, things are changing every day, so we've just said that you must have all of the items listed on the check-off sheet. So we removed the detailed information on there, just said all of the items on the check-off sheet. This is regarding agricultural buildings, it says prior to construction of all agricultural buildings, a building permit must be issued in order to ensure compliance with all property development regulations, and building permits for agricultural buildings will not be assessed an application fee unless inspections are requested. So if someone's coming in and building a new horse barn, or a tobacco barn, or a machinery shed, or something on their property, they are required to get a building permit to ensure that they do meet the proper setbacks, so they're not building too close to the property lines. We were in litigation over this issue, where someone built a building and said it was an agricultural building, and it was too close to the property lines. So that's why we put this in there. They are required to get a building permit. If they don't want to have any inspections, if they don't want footer or framing inspections and stuff, we waive the fee, because all we do is we review to make sure they meet setbacks. But if they do want inspections for footers and framings, things of that nature, then they do have to pay for that, since we do have to send staff out to do the proper inspections. Item 360-040, construction equipment, it says no construction vehicles, equipment, or material shall be parked for more than 24 hours on any publicly dedicated subdivision street or county road while being used in construction of any building addition thereto. So this just says no construction vehicles, equipment, or materials can be left in the roadway longer than 24 hours on any subdivision street or county road. So we're just putting a little bit more teeth into what we say cannot be there for longer than 24 hours.
Alright, Commissioners, are there any additions or corrections, or questions that you have on Division 360? Okay, anybody here have any questions or additions? Okay, seen none. Ms. Alvey, I think we'll move into Division 370?
Okay, 370, Administration Enforcement and Penalties. Again, this is just some grammatical changes on this, where we're changing the word administrator to director, and then capitalizing county judge executive, so you'll just see those changes in there as well. We added the word code to enforcement there, just as a clarifying point in the ordinance. And then in 370-030, it says compliance with zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. We struck the first sentence, it says as used herein, references to these regulations shall have reference to the zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulation, as the facts or questions before the commission may require, both the comprehensive zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation shall be considered as one. So we removed that part, and just put, left the standard language, it says any conflict between the terms and provisions contained in either the comprehensive zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations when compared to all other resolved, all others shall be resolved by the commission in its discretion, provided that those conflicts identified by KRS-100 shall be interpreted in a way that is least restrictive to the property owner. So we removed, again, the first sentence in 370-030, and then the next one here just talks about changing the word from administrator to director, and then we fixed the grammatical dimensional variance, just made that a lowercase. So that is all that's in that part.
Alright, you've heard the proposal here. Any additions or corrections, changes? Okay. You know, if we're going too fast, we'll slow down, or whatever, but, you know, don't want to, just keep rolling, Mr. King says, alright. Any, I don't see any changes, so, or suggestions? So Ms. Alvey, we'll move into Division 420.
Division 420, this is the inclusion of new definitions and the adoption of the Planner's Dictionary that is published by the American Planning Association. So there's no way that we could have a definition book, or definitions in our zoning ordinance that could cover everything that we would run across. So staff occasionally will go to, we call it the Little Red Book, it's a Planner's Dictionary, and it's published by the American Planning Association. So at times that we don't have a definition, or it's a gray area of what's really the true meaning of that, we'll pull that out. So what we are suggesting is in the event that a definition is not listed in this section, which is Division 420, or document, in this section or document, staff shall refer to a Planner's Dictionary published by the American Planning Association. So basically, it just gives staff another reference tool, that's been formally adopted by the Planning Commission and legislative bodies as a guide for any definitions that we do not have in our book. These are the definitions, and we'll get to these under each section as we go through the zoning ordinance, so I'm not even going to go through these in detail, because they won't really have a whole lot of meaning at this point, but these are the definitions that, we have one, two, three, we have three of them, under residential care facility, we have two miscellaneous definitions, so I will go over the miscellaneous ones real quick. Loading area, we didn't have a definition for loading area, nor did we have a definition for vehicular use area. So those are two definitions that we'll look at, look to be adopted. And then we have a whole set of definitions related to agritourism, and we'll talk about that when we get there. And then we have a whole nother section related to distilleries and barrel warehouses, when we get to that section of the zoning ordinance. So I guess we don't really have any action on this one.
Right. I would agree. So we'll move into Division 270-080?
Correct. Okay, so this is a new section, Section 270-080, this is going to be listed under our capacity standards, so when a new subdivision comes in, they have to look under to ensure that they're meeting all the capacity standards, such as water, sewer, gas, electric, fire suppression, things of those nature. So Section 270-080 is regarding cluster mailboxes. So recently, the postmaster, the local postmasters have started to implement the regulation, from our understanding, that's been in place for years, it's just never been enforced regarding cluster mailboxes. So we added language that basically says, the United States Postal Service is directed by statute to provide reliable and efficient services, and has determined that centralized delivery fulfills their responsibility to provide safe, efficient delivery for both customers and postal service. The Postal Operations Manual, Section 631.2, provides the guidelines used by local postal managers to determine which mode of delivery is to be used, including equipment and location of boxes. All developments must be reviewed by and comply with the recommendations of USPS. So just like the subdivision that you just had, that came before you, they will not have individual mailboxes at their street, or at their driveways, they will have a cluster mailbox system. And they're working with the developers on these, on providing locations and things of that nature, and they're even implementing them on future sections. So if a subdivision has come in, and they're only on Section 3, Section 4, 5, and 6, to finish out the subdivision, they are working with some of them to maybe have one post with two mailboxes, so they have less stops, or they are requiring them to put in cluster systems.
So as Amy said, even the one that was just approved this morning, they're going to have to comply with this, even though it's not in our regulations yet, because the post office is simply saying, we're not delivering mail unless you have a cluster mailbox system. So we're making sure it's in our regulations, so everybody is aware of it when they plan for that development. So somewhere in the current, the one we approved this morning, they'll have to show cluster mailboxes, there's got to be a pull-off and area to have safe, where they can get out of their vehicles and go to the mailbox. It's going to change things a lot. And that's not only in Oldham County, it's in the region, and they're enforcing it across the nation.
And so we have just referenced, this is language straight from USPS, the Postal Operations Manual, Section 631.2. So in the event that they do change their regulations again, regarding what type of mail delivery requirements they have, it will be updated, you know, our regulation will still stay in compliance based off of that, citing that section. So that's all on that, on cluster mailboxes.
Alright, yeah, yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
Just a question about this, and who reviews the site location for the postal boxes?
They actually have, they just recently created a position, and he's a regional manager, and he comes to our TRC meetings, and he meets with the developer, and they agree upon a, agreed upon location and what type of boxes they'll have.
So does the county, or the county planning department, have any recommendations? Because a lot of times, a lot of these pull-offs are going to be somewhere, I'm assuming, because I've seen some in Jefferson County, some of them are right off of the edge of their subdivision roads, which are county roads down there.
It'll have to be, first of all, it has to go based on their operations manual, which has recommendations for the pull-off, but then it'll also have to be part of the construction plans reviewed by the county engineer's office. So we'll have review of where it goes, and how it's designed and integrates back into the roadway, but we won't necessarily have to review the actual boxes themselves.
I've seen a couple of these in Jefferson County. I know one facility now, the mail person will be there, she'll be there for several minutes, you know, and then all of a sudden, you'll see four or five cars pull up, and they're all parked on the side of the street, because there's only enough room for the truck, for the mail truck, and not enough room for cars, so everybody's trying to pass each other on this tight subdivision road.
Yep.
So I just didn't know if the county's going to be involved in some of the planning.
We will be, again, in review of construction plans as they relate to the roadway.
Because I only saw a couple pull-off areas on the previous one we just looked at.
Yeah.
It didn't look very...
They may have to end up giving up a lot.
Ah, that's what I was...
And that's been an issue for the next sections of developments that are coming in to comply with this, so.
Any other questions on this one? We really don't have a lot of control over this, but, okay. We'll move into next section, which would be landscape regulations, 330-030.
Sure. So this is a simple one here, we did not have any landscape regulation provisions when it came to institutional uses, such as schools and hospitals, things of that nature. So we added language that said institutional uses shall comply with all sections of this division, which is Section, Division 300, except for Section 300-050, perimeter landscape buffer areas unless the commission requires vehicular use landscape buffer areas to be added as a result of a community facility review process. So they have to require, they'll be required, like schools, fire departments, anything that's a public utility, things of those natures that are serve the community, they are required to come before the Planning Commission for a community facility review, and as part of that, they'll have to show a landscape plan. So they will, they are exempt from Section, the perimeter landscape buffer areas unless the commission requires that at the community facility review process hearing. So this basically, like, again, we didn't have anything in here that related to institutional uses, so it was kind of like, well, you know, they should be required to provide proper landscaping and screening as well, so we're just adding number eight in there. So that one's pretty simple.
Okay. You've heard this one, is there any discussion, any additions, corrections? Okay, I'm sorry. Yep, anybody, that's right, anybody in the audience also can provide input? Alright, seen none, we'll move into the next section, which is residential care facilities.
Yes, and I apologize, I did not put a header on your papers that were in your packet, so it's the one that's blank at the top, but what we are looking to do, as I was doing research on another topic, I ran across regulations regarding community facility, community facilities, residential care facilities, and they are actually regulated through KRS-100. Right now, we require a residential care facility as a conditional... Right now, we require a residential care facility as a conditional use and goes before the Oldham County Board of Adjustments, which I found out is not correct. Because they are allowed, and we'll get to that here in just a second, it's, they are allowed through KRS 100 to be anywhere that a regular, single-family structure is allowed without review. So, in reviewing that, the definition of community residents and developmentally disabled individuals, we are removing those two definitions and replacing those with the ones that are in KRS 100. So, I'm not going to go through and read all of those. But currently, community residence is our conditional use in all of the zoning classifications listed there. So, again, in reviewing another topic, I ran across this. So, the definitions that are, we're wanting to add, which are the ones that are in KRS 100, it just says person with a disability, as a person with physical, emotional, or mental disability, including but not limited to an intellectual disability, cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism, deafness, or hard of hearing, sight impairments, and orthopedic impairments, but not, not including convicted felons or misdemeanors on probation or parole, or receiving supervision or rehabilitation services as a result of their prior conviction, or mentally ill persons who have pled guilty but mentally ill to a crime, or not guilty by reason of insanity to a crime. Person with disability does not include persons with current illegal use of alcohol or any controlled substance as regulated under KRS Chapter 218A. So, this pretty much spells out what a person with a disability is. So, if it's someone that has not, someone that has a disability, it can't be something that they've been convicted of through a mental illness, or they're going through rehab, things of that nature. So, then it says a residential care facility is a residence operated and maintained by sponsoring private or governmental agency to provide services in a home-like setting for persons with disabilities. And then, what service, definition of services is include but not limited to supervision, shelter, protection, rehabilitation, personal development, and attendant care. So, what we want to add is, this is based off KRS 1984, residential care facility, it says any sponsor, which is the definition that I just read, that says a sponsoring private or governmental agency shall be permitted to operate a residential care facility in any residential district, zone, or subdivision, subject only to compliance with the same limitations upon area, height, yard, screening, parking, number of dwelling units, and number of occupants per dwelling unit as applied to other residences in the district, zone, or subdivision. For purposes of determining the number of occupants in a residential care facility or in any other dwelling units which comprise the facility, employees of the sponsoring agency providing services to persons with disabilities shall be counted only if their permanent residence is maintained at the facility. No conditional use permit, not otherwise required for a residence within a zone or land use category shall be required for the operation of a residential care facility. And again, that is per KRS 1984 that outlines residential care facility for persons with disability. So, what we will do is we will remove the residential care facility from those conditional use standards that we had listed on the previous slide, and they will be added as a, as a permitted use in the following zoning classifications, which is AG1, CO1, R1A, R1, R2, R2A, R3, R4, R4A, T, O1, O2, and CN. All of those list residential uses as a permitted use. So, we had had one that went for a conditional use permit over off Highway 42. They got a conditional use permit. They were going to have a home, it was an existing home that they were going to make ADA compliant for people that had acquired brain injuries. And they went through the conditional use process for that.
Was that the Behave?
No.
No.
Resilient care, resident, resilient care, something, yeah. So, technically, they would not have had to done that because it is a permitted use anywhere where a single-family, normal, single-family structure would be allowed.
So, Cedar, like a Cedar Lake Lodge or the one at Crestwood, Apple Patch? I know it's changed its name, but it would be, it would fall under this?
Correct. Correct. We did have two that went in, in Sycamore Run off of 42 and Smith Lane in Sycamore Run subdivision. They weren't, they were similar to residential care facilities, but they required, the residents required 24-hour nursing care and they were more critical care and they, it was much more intense. They were the first type of homes that were built in the, in the state of Kentucky. And they were required to get conditional use permits because of the type of care that they were providing. But under, you know, like you said, if a Cedar Lake home or anything of that nature, they're allowed under KRS in any residential subdivision, in anywhere a regular, single-family home would be allowed. So, we're striking our old language and adding the updated language based off KRS 100.
Okay, any additions or corrections, questions, or anyone here? All right, we'll proceed on, Ms. Alvey.
Okay, so, they're going to get a little more cumbersome as we go now, unfortunately. So, the next section is Division 290 sign regulations, content removal. So, anybody that has attended any of David Pike's training in the last two years has heard the story of Reed versus the town of Gilbert. But if you have not, basically, the town of Gilbert passed an ordinance regulating the posting of signs in the town. The ordinance created different categories of signs, including audiological signs and political signs and temporary directional signs relating to a qualifying event. The ordinance applied different restrictions to each category. So, the ordinance was more restrictive with its regulation on temporary directional signs. So, Good News Community Church and its pastor Clyde Reed, they held, they didn't have a permanent residence for their church and they held church services at various buildings throughout the town, different ones each week. So, they would go out and put signs out, you know, a couple of days before, you know, giving people an idea where the, where the service was going to be this week. And then, they would immediately pick them up the next day after church service. Well, the town cited Reed because the signs violated the sign ordinance and Reed brought the suit to United States District Court of Arizona, claiming that the ordinance violated his freedom of speech. And the town cited aesthetic appeal and traffic management as interest served by implementing the different restrictions. So, it actually went up through the United States Supreme Court and they ruled in favor of Reed, saying that it was unconstitutional because they were regulating the signs, discriminating against the signs because of the content. So, if you have to read a sign to determine whether it's allowed or not, it's illegal. So, after the ruling of Reed versus town of Gilbert, again, staff has held, and the ruling was in 2015. Staff has attended several sessions and they've all included a review of this decision by the United States Supreme Court, where we were strongly advised to update our sign regulations, removing content-based. So, staff only made a few minor changes, such as increasing, other than removing the content. Few minor changes to the sign regulations, such as increasing the maximum sign of electronic signs from 20 square feet to 24 square feet. All of the sign companies that have called us and we've dealt with and stuff said, "They, they don't make a 20-square-foot sign. They make a 24-square-foot sign. It's, it's more of a standard size." So, we agreed and reviewed it. So, we just basically moved the, the minimum size of electronic signs from 20 square feet to 24 square feet. That doesn't give them more sign allowance overall. It just allows the, the portion that they are allowed, 24 square feet, can now be of electronic sign versus 20. So, going through the sign regulations, again, it's, it's pretty cumbersome. But, Item B, it just says, you know, we went through what is the purpose of the sign regulations. So, we kind of reworded that a little bit. It says promote a healthy business climate by encouraging signage to be compatible with the surrounding area and promote the effective use of signs. And then, to reduce clutter and enhance the aesthetic environment of the county to ensure the protection of property values and protect the character of the neighborhoods, eliminate safety hazards due to collapse, fire, collision, decay, and abandonment, et cetera. And also, to promote the safety of persons and property by requiring that signs do not create a traffic hazard, et cetera. So, that was just kind of cleaning up a little bit of the wording there. So, then, we added, under applicability, the first one says, "The division must be interpreted in a manner consistent with the First Amendment guarantee of free speech. All signs must comply with the regulations in the zoning district in which it's located." So, that remained. And then, it says, number three, "Signs not permitted as being allowed by right or by permit under this division may be reviewed by the Board of Adjustments as a conditional use permit." So, if someone's come in to our office and we say, "You can't, you know, that sign doesn't fit anywhere in our regulations," what, you know, you know, you can't have the sign. So, this gives them the option to go before the Oldham County Board of Adjustments and ask for that sign to be reviewed. It's a public hearing process, so it's advertised, adjoining property owners are notified. And they can ask the board to see if they'll grant them that sign permit, if staff is not willing to, based off what the way the regulations read. So, if it's some type of special circumstance. So, item number four says, "No signs shall be placed in any public right-of-way or easement without written permission from the jurisdiction that has ownership of the right-of-way or easement." So, if you want to put it in a LG&E easement, your sign, you have to provide written documentation that that easement holder is allowing you to place the sign in their easement area. So, sign definitions that were removed, banner, billboard sign, board of adjustments, construction sign, home occupation sign, memorial sign, nameplate, off-premise, private sale, real estate, snipe sign, and special event sign. All of those definitions were removed from the definition page. So, Section 290-050 sign regulations and allowance and calculations. Item number five was removed from this section and relocated under each commercial industrial zoning district for clarification purposes. So, we just took Item 5 out under the general allowances and put it under each section because a lot of people struggled, you know, finding that each time. So, we just found it was much user-friendly, more user-friendly that way. So, again, exempt sign standards. The following were removed from exempt signs as they are, as they are content-based. So, memorial signs, political signs, real estate signs, nameplate, not name plat, nameplate, private sale, landmark signs, no trespassing, and special event signs. Because you have to read those to be able to tell what type of sign it is. If you have to read it to be able to enforce it, you can't do that. So, language was added, number one, and number two, to cover the above signs that exempts wall signs of two square feet or less, as well as freestanding signs of six square feet or less and allows one per road frontage with property owner approval. So, you can still have everything that's listed up there. We just don't call them that type of sign anymore. Because again, you have to, if you have to read it to understand what type of sign it is. Political signs are addressed in the definition section and flags were also updated in this section as well. Permanent signage, previously called on-premise signage. We removed Item 1A regarding the subdivision construction signs because they are content-based and will, and we will all, will, should allow two identification signs at the subdivision entrance, including apartments and condos, which could cover the current construction sign as well as their signature sign, entrance sign. So, again, we had a temporary construction sign that would say, you know, "Coming soon" or "Section 1 now available," you know, they'd have a nice big sign out there. And then, they want to have their main subdivision entrance sign, their signature entrance sign, we'll call that. But again, we couldn't say it was a subdivision construction sign because, again, if you have to read it to be able to interpret what type of sign it is. So, we just said, "Well, you'll be allowed to have two identification signs at your subdivision entrance." One, obviously, would be your permanent sign for your signature entrance and the other one can be your temporary construction sign. In R4 high-density residential district sign regulations, we just reorganized those to make those a little bit easier to read. And sign calculation details were added to all non-residential zoning classifications. So, we kind of grouped those together and put those in charts to make those a little bit easier to read. Section 290-120 talks about temporary signage. Regulations were updated to consolidate temporary freestanding signs, wall signs, and banners into one area. And like I said, there's a lot of markup on the sign regulations. Again, it's to remove everything that is content-based out of the regulations. So, nothing new was added, allowing more signs or locations, or setbacks, or heights, or anything of that nature. None of that was changed, except for the one where we said it went from 20 to 24 on there. So, really, it was just removing that content-based language. That's it, on signs.
All righty, got that one. Now, any additions, corrections? This is, like Amy pointed out, a lot of information and it looks like there's a lot of things that were changed, but most of them were in regard to the Supreme Court's decision to not regulate content. So, any questions, concerns, additions? Okay, seen no hand go up, Ms. Alvey. I guess we'll move into agriturism buildings. I'm sorry, nope?
Nobody out there? All right.
Nobody's jumping up?
All right, agriturism buildings. So, again, we talked about previously in Division 420, we had, basically, agriturism building or agritourism came out of the new fad of having barn weddings. So, what people were doing is they were repurposing existing farm structures or farm buildings and they were becoming now a place of gathering, which kind of changes the use of the property and changes building code requirements as well. So, House Bill 360 was implemented by the state and I think it was March of 2018 when it was actually officially adopted. But basically, what they did is they defined what agriturism is, which is it's the act of visiting a farm or ranch or any agricultural, horticultural, agribusiness operation for the purpose of enjoyment, education, or active involvement in activities of farm ranch and of the farm rancher operation. So, an agriturism activity is, states it's carried out on the farm, ranch, or agricultural operation, horticultural operation, agribusiness operation, and allows or invites participants to view or participate in activities for recreational entertainment or educational purposes. Qualifying, qualifying activities may include but not limited to weddings and other events, harvest-your-own operations, farmers' markets, natural resource-based activities. Activities may qualify for agriturism, whether the, they, whether or not the participant pays to view or participate in the activity. So, this includes, you know, farm tours and things of that nature. But you'll see, you know, it says included but not limited to weddings. So, an agriturism building is any building or structure or portion thereof that is used for one or more agriturism activities. So, once we got into that, there's regulations that, through the Kentucky Building Code, of whether or not things have to be sprinkled based off your occupancy, things of that nature. So, we added in the definition of commercial kitchen, which is an area where appliances are used for heating and cooking food, which produce grease vapors, steams, fumes, smoke, or odors that are required to be removed through local exhaust ventilation systems. This is from the 2009 International Mechanical Code, which our building inspector uses. We added the definition of farm tour. Tourism conducted on a working farm or any other agricultural, horticultural, or agribusiness operation where the working environment forms an agricultural product. And then, fire area, it's the aggregate floor area enclosed and bounded by firewalls, fire barriers, exterior walls, or horizontal assemblies of a building. And that's from the 2013 Kentucky Building Code. So, we have all of that because we had to implement some type of regulations. Right now, if someone came in, which we just had last month, where they wanted to go in and fix up a building where they would have weddings. So, right now, they have to come in and get a conditional use permit to do this. And we, we kind of, if there's a gray area, you know, that leaves it open to interpretation by the Board of Adjustments. So, right now, they come in as private event space because you're inviting outside people to come in and use some type of facility or structure on your property. So, now, we have regulations regarding, you know, agriturism in the process. So, we set up what the purpose is. So we set up what the purpose is. It says, "To allow the public to visit working farms or any agricultural, agribusiness operation for the enjoyment, education, or active involvement in activities of the farm or operation, which allows the means of earning supplemental income that can help preserve and sustain local farms." Agriturism and agriturism buildings, those are the same definitions that we just spoke about. So an agriturism building would be allowed in zoning districts AG1, CO1, R1, R1A, R2, R2A, R3, R3A, R4, and R4A. Those are anywhere that an agriculture use is allowed. So they, they still would have to come before, if someone wanted to have an agricultural building, I'm sorry, agriturism building, they still would have to get a conditional use permit. So it still gives the neighbors an opportunity to say, you know, "I want to limit their hours of operation, you know, how many events are they going to have a year, what about outdoor music, lighting, signage, anything of that nature?" So as part of the conditional use standards, they have to be at least five acres. All structures, which the five acre comes into the state definition for agricultural uses, it has to be five contiguous acres in those zoning classifications that I just listed off. So minimum lot size of five acres, all structures have to be at least 30 feet from all property lines. Minimum parking requirement shall be one nine-by-18 parking space for each 50 square feet of primary assembly area. This is the same parking requirements that we have for churches. So if you're going to get married in a barn, you've got to have the same parking requirement that you have if you're getting married, you know, as you were getting married in a church. They're exempt from Section 280-150, Parking Lot Layout and Design, Item 2 and 3. This is the part of our zoning regulation that requires the driveway and parking areas to be of non-dusting. So obviously, if it's going to be on a farm and keep the rural character of the area, you know, most people don't want to pave their driveway or pave the hayfield where people are going to park for the weddings. So they are exempt from that regulation, but they still have to show that they have adequate parking space based off their occupancy level. Building code requirements, occupancy load calculations, and fire suppression requirements are all outlined in House Bill 360, and building code requirements are subject to change per Kentucky Building Code. So that's, that's really all I have on that. And that's really to address the abundance of calls and requests that we've had where people are, like I said, converting barns into wedding venues or event spaces and stuff. And now the state has set regulations in place, and we just need to adopt what they have with our own specific conditions.
All right. You've heard the proposal here. Are there any questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Faly.
Does it affect the Cattlemen's Association meetings or extension field days?
No. That would be considered like a farm tour.
That's my question.
No. It's listed in there. Farm tours are allowed as part of agriturism.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other additions, corrections? Yes, sir. Mr. Faly.
Existing businesses that do weddings right now in Oldham County, will they be subject to this?
If, if they want to convert an existing building, but you're saying they're already existing businesses?
Uh-huh.
And, and existing barns?
Uh-huh.
Well, they should have come in to get a, a permit through us on that.
Okay.
So they should already be covered under that.
Okay.
And some of them are coming in to get conditional use permits. We don't have the standards in place, but we're applying them, like the one we heard last month.
Kind of add for the fact, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're catching up with them.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right. Seeing none. Anyone here in the audience have any questions or concerns? Okay. Seeing none, we'll then move into the lighting regulations, Section Division 310.
All right. So previously back in, I think it was 2005, staff started working on lighting standards. And I'm not sure I wasn't here back then, but they never made it anywhere past Study Review Committee. So it never came before the Planning Commission. They had drafted regulations, but I'm not sure why, you know, it never moved forward for review and approval. So staff kind of picked up from where they left off and started going through those regulations. So the proposed regulations include a purpose and intent, applicability, definitions, general requirements, exceptions, sign lighting, prohibited lighting, lighting plan requirements, what type of inspections will be done, and non-conforming uses, permits, and waivers. So I kind of tried to summarize as much of this as I could. Under general requirements, all public and private outdoor lighting shall be fully shielded. So they'll have to be the shoebox-type lighting, so they'll have to be fully shielded. Canopies such as fuel islands, outdoor sale areas, drive-through bays, hotels, et cetera, cannot be more than 50-foot candles at any point beneath their canopy. So like when you pull into Thornton's at night to get gas, obviously, you want that to be well-lit if it's dark and you're pulling in to get gas at 2:00 a.m. or something of that nature. So you're allowed to have 50-foot candles under that canopy. You can't go outside that canopy, but you can have that brightness under your own canopy. Exterior sports complexes have a max pole height of 50 feet and limited hours of operation if within 500 feet of a residential use. So if someone decides to design a big sports complex somewhere and it, and it abuts residential use and stuff, we'll have the ability to limit, through the public hearing process, limited hours of operation on that.
That wouldn't affect schools and school football fields and baseball?
Correct. Parking lots have pole height limits based off setback of the pole from the property line and whether or not it's adjacent to residential use. So your height changes based off where your location of your poles are to make sure that there are, you know, not any light spill over onto the adjoining properties. Foot candles at property lines when adjacent to residential zone properties or residentially-used property is half a foot candle, and it's one foot candle for non-residential uses or right-of-way. So if you have a commercial building that is next to a residential used property, only half of a foot candle can be the light trespass at the building line, or at the, I'm sorry, at the, at the property line. If it is non-residential, if it's from commercial to commercial, we'll say, it can only be one foot candle at the property line. Lighting plan requirements. We recently had passed, under our site plan review, we have three different categories, category one, two, and three. So all category one is reviewed at staff level, so that means they don't have an impact on the traffic network or infrastructure system. So all category one development plans, so they don't trigger, have, trigger impacts on the road networks, so they have less than 20 peak hour trips. They have to, they must submit a lighting plan. So a lighting plan shall be depicted on the site plan indicating the location of current proposed outdoor fixtures, include type of lighting, mounting, height, and lamp source. If it is category two or category three, so that means they have, you know, more than 100 peak hours and are on more, onto a road, it's either 1,500 to 2,000, yeah, 1,500 to 2,000 ADTs. So all category two and three development plans, which means they would go to TRC, or they would come here for full Planning Commission review. If they're non-residential use, abutting a residential or agricultural use, or multifamily plan, shall submit a photometric plan stamped by a licensed engineer or architect. So you have two different types of plans. You have a lighting plan, and then you have a photometric plan. The photometric plan is, is much more intense, and actually, will put the foot candles on the site, and so will you know what type of foot candles you're going to have at the property lines. So photometric plan shall be depicted on the site plan indicating the location of the current and proposed outdoor lighting fixtures, including foot candle distribution, type of lighting, mounting height, lamp source, and photometric calculations. So category two and three, again, require photometric plan because they're more of an intense use on the property. So that's, that's the quick and dirty on the lighting standards.
All right. Any questions, additions? A lot of this is pretty technical, and, you know, when you start measuring foot candles and, and light spill over and all that, it's a pretty, you know, it's a science of itself. So Amy and the staff have done a really good job of trying to put this together. I think that's one of the reasons it hadn't moved forward before, because it was so, you know, I'll say complicated, but
cumbersome?
cumbersome. And we didn't have the equipment to measure foot candles, and I don't know whether we still have or not, but
We don't. We would either have to subcontract that out or have staff, we would have to acquire that, but most likely, we would have to have that subcontracted out and then turn around, like we do with traffic analysis. If it has to be studied, then we turn around and bill the developer person on that.
Well, and the other thing is, it's become easier to do the photometric plan. Computer software now can do it. You don't have to go get a lighting expert. Anybody that has AutoCAD or any of the design software, I think they can do this as well. And then it's a matter of checking it in the field.
Okay. Any additional questions or concerns?
And right now, Peevee Valley, the city, anyone within the city limits of Peevee Valley, they are the only ones that have a lighting ordinance. So.
All right. Well, let's move on into then Division 25, AG2, Ag Business District.
Okay. So AG2 is somewhat directed towards the last one, which will be the big topic of the day, distilleries, breweries, and barrel warehouses. So we've had staff and SRC members and a lot, we've had a lot of discussions on distilleries and breweries and where they should go. So we have proposed a regulation, and it's a new zoning classification. So there are no properties zoned in Oldham County, Kentucky, zoned AG2 Agricultural Business District. So if someone wanted to do anything that's listed in AG2, it would require a zoning change and would be required to be approved by the legislative body. So fiscal court in the three cities would have the ultimate authority of changing the zoning to AG2. So AG2 is the same as AG1, except for, under the permitted use column, you'll see a column that says, a title that says agricultural business. So under agricultural business, distillery, craft distillery, brewery, microbrewery, barrel warehouses, and we moved farm implement repair from the conditional use standards over to the permitted uses, because that's more of an agricultural business that you would, you would see. So the only reason that someone would want to go to AG2 is because they wanted to do something listed under that agricultural business classification. That would be the only reason why they'd want to, want that zoning change. So the intent of AG2 is agricultural business district is to provide areas for agricultural development to allow the means of earning supplemental income that can help preserve, sustain local farms, and contribute to the economic base in rural areas of Oldham County. So again, you'll see on the screen, the first column is permitted uses. The only thing that is changed or added, different from AG1, which is existing zoning, to AG2 are the items listed there in blue. They still have to have minimum of five acres, which now in AG1 is only required to have one acre. So minimum lot size is five acres. Setbacks are the same, minimum lot width, minimum lot depth, height of structures, all of that is exactly the same as AG1. So the only difference is one acre versus five acres. So that's, that's really kind of the basics on AG2. So this would be a zoning district that is created in the event someone wanted to do the next topic of distilleries, breweries, and barrel warehouses. It gives them the, what we feel, the proper review process by a zoning change that makes that decision go to the legislative body who has the ultimate authority to say yes or no, this is appropriate or is not appropriate.
Amy, with the exception of if, there's also industrial. So this is only if they were in the outskirts. They could, they could be in industrial zoning, the distilleries and
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. That's what I prefaced, the only reason someone would want to do AG2 is for the items in blue.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any questions or additions, corrections? Mr. Faly.
Question.
Huh?
You have, you have an approval-denial time of seven to nine months?
For a zoning change.
And that's for a zoning change?
Correct.
What if it doesn't fall in that? What if?
Sorry?
What if that doesn't happen, then?
No, that's just the normal timeframe that it takes. It's, it's all really dependent on how fast the developer wants to move, move forward.
Okay, that's not a hard pass?
No.
Okay.
No, no. That's just the average time that it takes for a zoning change, is seven to nine months.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Alvey?
Then the new comprehensive plan with a lead topic zone, AG2?
No. Everything requires, this requires a zoning change.
Okay. So if somebody comes forward
Your mic on.
And wants to do this.
So if someone comes forward and wants to do this now, they would go through the zoning to get it changed to AG2, right?
Correct. It would require a zoning change.
So there will be no, you won't go in the comprehensive plan and set aside property like now that we have industrial and agriculture and all that?
No.
There'll never be one that adjusts for, it'll be strictly
AG2.
Okay.
Yes. It requires a zoning change.
Okay.
The comprehensive plan does not change any zoning anywhere, it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, but we don't have a section like
For future land use?
Yeah, future land use for the AG2.
No.
Don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else here that has questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll now move into the, our last section that we'll be considering today, which is distilleries, breweries, and barrel warehouses.
Yes.
And speaking from the SRC committee, we have discussed this and discussed it and discussed it. So we've got a lot of, a lot of talk time involved here.
Yes.
So, Ms. Alvey?
Yes. So this section outlines the regulations that would be put in place, that would allow a distillery, craft distillery, brewery, and microbrewery as a permitted use in the AG2 Agricultural Business District, which we just talked about. It requires a zoning change. The proposed plan would be reviewed by the Technical Review Committee, and then by Planning Commission for recommendation of approval or denial. And again, it takes anywhere from seven to nine months. So these are definitions that we have gone over. We have a definition for a barrel warehouse, brewery, brew pub, craft distillery, distillery, malt beverage, microbrewery, noxious emissions, and volatile organic compounds, which are So we have, these are the proposed regulations for if the property is located in AG2 district, that agricultural district that we just talked about that requires a zoning change. So this is, again, requires a zoning change. We'd come to you guys and then eventually go to legislative body for a review. 25% of the property has to be dedicated for agricultural use, as defined in chapter, KRS Chapter 100, or preserved in a conservation easement. Maximum allowed building height is 60 feet. All structures have to have front, rear, and side yard setbacks of not less than 500 feet. I thought I changed. Okay. I'm going to keep going, and maybe I just didn't change it on this slide. But no other, no owner or operator shall construct or operate a facility with noxious emissions unless it is equipped with and utilizes best available control technology as determined at the time of construction and permit review. Well, I changed, based off the comments that we had recently at the Study Review Committee last Thursday, I'll go back, because it should be in here, but I must have changed the wrong presentation. All structures, I was going to test my memory, all structures shall have a front, rear, and side yard setback of not less than 500 feet. So it should say, "All structures except for agricultural uses shall have a front, rear, and side yard setback of not less than 500 feet." That was one change that came out of the Study Review Committee meeting on Thursday. So it'll, it should say, "All structures except for agricultural uses shall have front, rear, and side yard setbacks of not less than 500 feet."
And it might have said, "All structures And it might have said all structures and other land uses, except ag buildings. Yeah, because we were saying that no, in that setback, the, the idea is that in that setback, there's no other land use or structures other than agricultural uses.
And then number four, said no owner or operator shall construct or operate a facility with noxious emissions unless it is equipped with and utilizes best available control technology as determined at the time of construction and permit review. Man, that's testing my memory. And what, as regulated by the Kentucky Division of Air Quality.
Yes.
Yeah. So number four, and I apologize, I changed this, but obviously pulled the wrong presentation. So that means that in the event that someone comes in today and wants to put in a distillery or a brewery or something of that nature, and they come and they get their building permits today, and they say this is the best technology to control the emissions that causes that black fungus. This is what you have to do. In five years, someone comes in to do the exact same project on another piece of property, and now they've got this new, up-to-date, ten times better than it was five years ago, piece of equipment, they're required to put what is the best available control technology. And that is determined by Kentucky Division of Air Quality. So whatever they say is the latest and greatest and best, that's what has to be put on at the time of construction review on that to help control those emissions. So facility tours, visitor centers, food service operations, restaurants, and sale of products produced on-site and complimentary products directly to consumers are permitted. Festivals or similar public gatherings which serve to promote the sale of locally produced products are permitted. Provided, any single event shall not exceed 56 continuous hours in length. So that basically gives you a half a day on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Development plan approval prior to issuance of any building permit for any structure, the applicant shall submit a development plan for review by the planning commission and legislative body. The content of the plan shall include all items set forth in Division 390 site plan regulations. So they have to go through a full site plan review of everything that's listed in there, impervious surface stormwater calculations, landscaping plan, lighting, all of that stuff. A traffic impact study prepared in accordance with Section 270 040 roadway capacity standard shall be required. And again, a land, a full landscape plan and lighting plan is required as well when the property is adjacent to residential uses. And, and the key word is residential uses. So if, just because it's zoned ag, doesn't mean they're, they don't have to do a landscape and lighting plan. If it's, if, if it is used for residential purposes, someone lives on that property, they have to comply with landscape and lighting plans. So if located in I1 or I2, right now, these are permitted uses in I1 and I2, which is light and, light industrial and heavy industrial. All structures shall have front and rear side yard setbacks of not less than 100 feet. When a distillery or brewery is adjacent to residential uses, the setback shall be 200 feet along that property line abutting the residential use. So the, the setback doubles if on the side that they're abutting that residential use. No owner, this, this goes into the same one, that they have to have the, the BACT, so they have to have the best available control technology installed at the time of construction permit review. Again, the same out, the same thing for, they're allowed to have facility tours and festivals and gatherings. Development plan approval, prior to the issuance of a building permit for any construction, the applicant shall submit a development plan for review by the planning commission and legislative body. The contents of the plan shall comply with Division 390 site plan regulations. They're required to do a traffic impact study, and they are required to have a landscape plan and a lighting plan. So this is craft distilleries and microbreweries. It's basically, again, I apologize, this was all on one slide before. It's the same process as it is in I1 and I2. Barrel warehouses, these are a little bit different. So in AG2, again, this requires a zoning change. So if someone wanted to do barrel warehouses in AG2, it would require a zoning change. Again, they have to have 25%, but the property has to be dedicated to agricultural uses. They have to have the most up-to-date BACT and the best available control technology as outlined by the Kentucky Division of Air Quality. Maximum allowed building height shall be 60 feet. All structures have to be, shall have front, rear, and side yard setbacks of not less than 500 feet. If they are in I1 or I2, the following provisions apply. Maximum building height is 60 feet. They have to have the newest technology installed as well. All structures shall have front, rear, and side yard setbacks of not less than 250 feet. So if you want to have a barrel warehouse in I1 or I2, you have to have at least a 250-foot setback on all sides. If the barrel warehouse is adjacent to residential use, the setback goes to 500 feet along those lines abutting residential uses. Brew pubs, we talked about brew pubs on here. Minimum 50% of the beer or malt beverage made on premise must be sold or consumed on site. Brew pubs will be a permitted use in C1, C2, C3, C4, I1, and IPD districts. These are all the same zoning classifications that allow a retail service and a restaurant in those zoning classifications. So you, again, they, they, these zoning classifications allow restaurants and retail service. So that way they kind of still fit within that same community area. Parking requirements shall be the same as restaurants listed in Division 280 for off-street parking requirements and loading regulations. So brew pubs would be a permitted use in those zoning classifications. Under conditional use standards regarding barrel warehouses in AG1, which we have a lot of ag property in Oldham County, so anything that is zoned AG1, it would require a conditional use permit, which is a public review, goes before the appropriate board of adjustments. They have to have, 25% of the land has to be dedicated to agricultural use. It has to have the same technology, the best available control technology in place. 60 feet is the maximum height, and the setbacks are 500 feet. So this gives you an ideal of, if you had a barrel warehouse on property that is zoned agricultural, and you had one barrel warehouse, and you had a, and it, you put it dead center of your property with 500-foot setbacks all the way around, a standard barrel warehouse is 100 feet wide by 200 feet deep. So that, at minimum, you would have to have 30 acres of land to have one barrel warehouse, based off the setbacks. So that just kind of gives you an ideal that if someone has 10 acres, they just can't go and put a barrel warehouse on it. So you're gonna have to have at minimum 30 acres to have one barrel warehouse. To have two, we assumed that they, they were not sprinkled. If they're sprinkled, they can be 100 feet apart. If they're not sprinkled, they have to be a minimum of 200 feet apart. So at minimum, if you have two barrel warehouses on property zoned agricultural, you're looking at minimum of right at 38 acres, 37.9 acres. Three barrel warehouses, you'd have to have 45.5 acres. So this is on barrel warehouses, total needed for, this is if it was in I1 or I2. If you had a barrel warehouse, it would be a permitted use in I1 or I2, but you'd have to have a minimum of 9.6 acres to have one barrel warehouse on I1 or I2. So if you had a barrel warehouse and say the property located on your west property line was residential use, so it, now your setback went from 250 feet to 500 feet, you'd have to have a minimum of 13.6 acres. And that's just assuming that it's on, you know, just one side and not on two sides, right, along the rear. So that just kind of gives you a conceptual ideal of what, what type of size property you would have at minimum to have, excuse me, one barrel warehouse. And this is just kind of a cheat sheet just to show you, like, distilleries and breweries, where they are, where they are a permitted use, where they are a conditional use, and then, and brew pubs. Their maximum height, setbacks, things of that nature.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, turn your mic on, please.
That last slide showing what went where, is that gonna be part of the-
Zoning ordinance?
Yes.
No. As like an example, you mean, of what it would be?
You know, like we do the site turns and things like that?
No, we hadn't planned on that, but we can think about, you know, putting that as a small exhibit or example in the book to give people an ideal of minimum or something. So if they're reading through our regulations and think that they've got 15 acres, they can do that. Kind of giving them an ideal-
Yes.
Reality check, maybe.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Falvey? I'm sorry, Ms. Fal- Ms. Bonnet, sorry. Mr. Falvey on line down here, sorry about that.
I think all the numbers and everything have completely confused me.
Okay.
So I'm gonna walk through this and see if I'm seeing something incorrectly.
Okay.
So basically, the AG2 was created specifically for like the distillery, craft distillery, brewery, because that's the only difference between that and AG1.
Correct.
The AG2 can be as small as five acres.
Correct.
None of those agricultural businesses can be put on five acres because of the setback requirements.
A farm implement repair could be technically?
I guess, I just don't want to run into the situation where we've had people come forward with this lot and they go, well, this is zoned this, but we can't use it because the setbacks create an unusable space, this little dot in the center. So therefore, we're gonna ask for all of these variances to be able to use, you know, we can say it's a hardship.
But see, you're, you, they would have to request to have that property zoned to AG2, and they'd have to have a development plan to fit on there. We would never allow a distillery to try and come in on 10 acres with that type of setbacks.
I guess, then why allow it to be as small as five acres?
In the event that the change in zoning went through to AG2 and the distillery or never went in place, they could still do the other items on that acreage. So it, there's, there's a possibility that there could be a different land use in the future. It wouldn't be changed zoning to AG2 without knowing they had to meet all the requirements.
Correct.
And like Amy said, we would never allow them to move forward and try to do it with variances.
Okay.
That would completely defeat the purpose of trying to go through a zoning change because we've never approved those in the past.
Okay.
You know, with all those variances, so.
Yeah, but because it is a new zoning classification. If it was an existing classification that we were changing, decreasing minimum lot size or something of that nature, then yes, I would, I would say so. But with the new zoning classification, they know that they, and the use that they would have to have with their plan coming forward, you know, they would have to show all of that. And the five acres comes from the definition for agricultural uses as a minimum of five continuous acres. Okay.
So they could potentially sell off land for one of the other AG2 uses or ag uses. It would have to be five acres minimum.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Bonnet?
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Amy, can you, I guess, give me what's in your mind, or the mind that the TRC came up with, a difference between a microbrewery and a brew pub?
Okay.
Because, you know, there's a lot of restaurants out there that consider themselves macrobrewers.
A brew pub has to sell food.
Uh huh.
So 50% of the beer or malt beverage made on premise must be sold or consumed on site. So 50% has to be sold or consumed on site. So a microbrewery is a facility for the production and packaging of malt beverage that manufacture 50,000 barrels or less annually. So the, a microbrewery doesn't necessarily, they actually produce it on-site, but don't have any type of food service with it.
Okay.
And the difference between a restaurant that serves beer and a brew pub is that the brew pub actually makes the beer on-site. Versus a restaurant that has bottled beer or tap beer that they don't produce anything.
So I guess my question is, because you hear a lot of commercial in advertising that says that we've opened a restaurant up and it's a microbrewery. I, I don't want to release names of some commercial facilities, but they identify themselves as a microbrewery.
They're actually making it there.
They're making it there.
Yes.
And I know they're making less than 50,000 barrels.
We would really classify that as a brew pub then.
Right. Some set up specifically so they can have a brewery right there, they're not producing massive-
But is their name going to cause a conflict? If somebody says, oh, they put in a microbrewery and it's on, it's in a commercial zone area?
Only if, they'll have to serve food in order to be in that commercial area. If they're not, if they're just brewing beer, they would not be in that commercial zoning classification.
And these are, like, microbrewery, that is the state definition of what microbrewery is, based off the 50,000 barrels-
Right.
Or less annually. So that's how like craft distillery and microbrewery, where they came from, is based off their production.
So I'm gonna just ask another question to relate to that. A business comes in and says they're a brew pub. They're a microbrewery facility, but another facility is next door that sells food.
No, has to be in the same establishment. Because we've even been asked if it has to have a food truck. They have to be duly licensed. So they have to have their health department license to prepare food as well as their brewing license through the state.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Mr. Clingin-Viewes?
I'd like a little clarification on the 500-foot setback.
I'll let you answer that.
Well, it, and, and we discussed it at the SRC, and it's that no structures or other land uses except agricultural can be in that 500-foot setback.
It's just for agricultural use?
Only for agricultural use, that's correct. And we'll have to put, trust us that we discussed it at the SRC. And Amy didn't put it in this presentation, but it's specific to what the SRC voted on the other night. So it's no structures or other land uses other than agricultural can be in that 500-foot setback. So you can have a barn that supports an agricultural use, but you can't have a barn that's a wedding venue in that 500-foot setback.
Correct.
All right, any additional questions?
I got one other comment.
Okay.
I'm not very comfortable with-
Turn your mic on.
It is on. I'll get closer.
There you go.
I'm not real comfortable placing distilleries out in the rural environment. I'm more comfortable with the large amount of land it takes because in the event they did fail or something, you, you could have the potential of having a, some commercial, some industry sitting in the middle vacant in a rural area. So I think the large amount of land you have gives the potential for it to be redeveloped easier. I think that's something pretty important there.
All right, any additional questions or concerns? Anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns? Mr. Bazanas?
Thank you, my name's David Bazanas. I'm with the Chamber and Economic Development Office here in Oldham County, and I wanted to first thank the commission and the SRC for taking on this topic with the AG2 business and the craft brewing and the brew pub considerations. We have a lot of different types of inquiries into our county, and as tourism products are changing globally, especially around the country and the state here with the advent and growth of the distilleries, as we kind of unload a new Napa Valley throughout the Bluegrass region, we really struggle to find opportunities or places to accommodate some of these things that often are inquired about. So I appreciate the effort to, to look at this topic and to study it. And Mr. Chairman, for your leadership on this, and for Jim Urban and, and Amy and Tom for their, their help in putting the wording together. So I just wanted to say that from the Chamber and Economic Development Office, we appreciate the consideration for this.
Thanks, sir. All right, any, anything else for the good of the cause before we move forward with a vote? And this vote that we hopefully will take today is a recommendation to send this on to legislative bodies, which will be fiscal court, City of Crestwood, City of LaGrange, and City of Pee Wee Valley. So Mr. Urban, do you want to outline exactly what's being required?
Not really, because you've heard it all. But only in that we're asking for you to consider, based on the SRC's recommendation- consider, based on the SRC's recommendation, to advance all of the subject matter you've heard today, with the exception of what you didn't see, but we, I think, have clearly defined as that, what Mr. Klingef was brought up is, in the setback, that it can have no other structures or land use other than agricultural. That's the only addition that you don't see. We didn't have any comments from anybody that changed any of the language that the SRC has recommended. So with that, would ask that you consider advancing this to legislative bodies.
All right, and with that, the Chair would now entertain a motion on this recommendation that will be going to the legislative bodies. Any recommendations? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the discussion topics presented here today are advanced to the members of the various planning units, or the, the various members of the planning unit for consideration with, with the Commission's recommendation.
Is that adequate, Mr. Urban? I think he's busy. Is that, is it an adequate motion?
Sounded like it, yes.
He might not have heard it.
Move forward to the members of the various, members of the planning unit with consideration for recommendation and adoption.
That's correct.
Okay, got a motion on the floor? Ms. Smith, seconds? Is that now, is there any discussion? Mr. Douglas?
I have one. I just have a question. Is this same motion and proposal to fiscal court or the legislative bodies going to be the same?
Yes.
Yes.
So they are voting on one motion for all of these changes?
Well, no, they'll, they'll, we'll do the same presentation. Amy's going to have to, like, get watered with her up here to talk through all these again, but it'll be the exact same presentation. We're going to give them the same information. They can choose to adopt all of them as a whole, or they can choose to revise any. We're, we're making a recommendation to change the zoning ordinances. And the only ones that can change an ordinance are the legislative bodies, because ordinance is law.
What we're hoping is that, that they will all consider the same, you know, adopting the same language so that we don't end up with four plans that we have to consider, you know, it's four different parts of the county, you know, it would be, could be different. So, you know, that's, that's what our goal is, to try to accommodate with this recommendation, that there's enough language there that both the fiscal court and the three cities are comfortable, that they'll consider adopting, you know, all of the same language.
I could, I could see us doing this.
Right.
Adopting it in one complete language, but I could see members of the court or legislative bodies going, "I want to take each one separate."
When they can, yeah, and.
Because they may have concerns of each individual item on the ordinances.
Either way, you're asking them to look at it not as a whole, but all the pieces. So they can, if they chose to adopt each piece separately, they can do that. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Uh-huh, we've been there before, yes.
All right, any further discussion? Further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed with the vote, and I'll ask Ms. Nun, if you would, to take a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton, okay. Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Mr. Halfling?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
And Ms. Nassler?
Yes.
All right, with that, I would like to, on behalf of the SRC Committee, thank you all for considering this. It's been a long process. I want to thank the SRC Committee again for, you know, sending through lots of hours of meetings to get to this point. I'm glad, happy to say that the motion to send this for, as a recommendation to the legislative bodies has been approved unanimously on a vote of 13 to 0. So with that, got that completed, I'm sorry?
Just don't pack up.
That's right, we have, we have one other thing, one other item of business, an extension of expiration on Wolf Lake Estates. Mr. Urban?
Most of you that have been on the Commission for a while, and the new members, the Commission has given the authority to extend expiration dates to the staff, and we annually look at that, and, and typically, it's been working real well. The last time that we looked at that policy, we put a time limit on those extensions. Four, is that what it is? You can get four extensions. Wolf Lake Estates has asked for an extension, and they now are going over the fourth, they're on their fifth extension. This was the first time that anybody has come forward with an extension of expiration where we're applying the new rule, which is that they have to do a traffic analysis and go through the TRC before coming here for approval. Unfortunately, they didn't know that, and so they requested an extension and don't have enough time. So what I'd like to recommend is that the Commission go ahead and extend officially their expiration date for six months. They have to do a traffic assessment or analysis, and you have to do that when school is in session. They just found out about it last week. We, you know, again, we're going through this process, so obviously, they'll, they'll have three months where school's not in session, so we, they, their, their expiration would actually lapse in this process. So what I'd like to ask the Commission to do is consider extending the expiration date for six months so that they can go through that process like we have described.
And, Mr. Urban, tell them exactly where Wolf Lake Estates is, in case.
It's on Blake More Lane.
I'm sorry? Okay, okay, so that's, that's your recommendation?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And again, this is the first one that, and there's only a few of them that have long expiration dates, and this is one of them, and we just didn't even know what the expiration was. They came forward and said, "Extend it," and so now they have to go through that process. And they're, they're going to do it, but they don't have enough time before their expiration.
Okay, with that, you heard what the, the request is from staff, so as Chair, I'll open it up for motion or discussion or whatever. I'd like to get a motion first, if I could. Ms. Smith, do you have a?
I have a question.
Oh, I have a question. Let's get a motion on the floor first. Mr. McWilliams?
Some move, I'll make it.
Okay, got a motion to allow the, them to do the six-month extension? Okay, all right, we have a second? Mr. McWilliams, seconds? All right, now we'll open it up for discussion. Ms. Smith, and then.
I, did I understand you correctly, there are not many others that are in this category?
That's correct.
Because I don't want to set a precedent that that's going to happen repeatedly?
The only, I think, really, that one of the key reasons we're asking for this one to be extended is because the, of the traffic assessment that's required, and in doing that, you have to have school in session, and we're heading into a time period where the school's going to be out of session.
I understand that.
So I don't think you're setting a precedent by extending this one.
Thank you.
The applicant, the developers?
Carter Manor?
Carter Manor.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
I'm like Ms. Smith. I don't want to set a precedent either, but you made a comment that their intentions is to, within six months, come in with a traffic study, blah, blah, blah. Since we're going to give them this extension if we vote, does that give them the opportunity not, not to have to do the traffic study if they proceed forward within the six months?
No, absolutely, no. If they, if it comes, if they don't have it done within six months, they, they'll, we, we won't extend it again.
Okay.
And they intend to go through the process. They're, you know, we've been, told them what they have to do, they're fully cooperative, they're willing to do it, they just don't have the time. And we're the ones that suggested, actually, that we come in front of you and ask for that extension.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Klingefus?
Just, we're not required to notify them of the changes in the ordinances? We were doing that as a courtesy?
Well, I guess we aren't really required, but.
They, they got a letter last year, when they filed their extension last year, saying this was the last time that it would be approved administratively, and they got a copy of the revised ordinance that said, "This is the ne, this is the new process." What, the hard part is, is that they're, it's not like everyone renews January 1. Their plan expires May 30th. So they applied at the beginning of May. So I have to turn around and send their original plan and original traffic study to our traffic engineer to review it, to see what category it falls under. So they applied at the beginning of May for their extension of expiration. I sent it to our traffic engineer, then it comes back to me, and it says that they have to have a traffic analysis done. So then I send that to them. So you're talking two-week time period at this point, and now you've got a week's left of school. It's just the way that timing fell on this part. If it would have happened in January, there's no reason why they couldn't have gone through the process.
Okay. Yes, but I, did you have something? No? Okay. Any further discussion on a motion to allow a six-month extension on Wolf Lake Estates? Okay? All those in favor of allowing this extension, a six-month extension, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
Okay, all right, it is, it is passed, the extension has, has passed. Let me ask Ms. Falvey, do we have, what do we look like for next month? Tom?
Nothing that I can think of off the top of my head. But I apologize for my presentation not having that correct wording in there. It must have been, I must have updated my public presentation from the last time. I will send out that language, because I have it done, in an email to you guys today, so you know exactly what you really approved. I apologize.
And you might kind of just outline with the timeline of, of the consideration for the legislative bodies on these recommendations?
Yeah, yeah, I have a schedule and stuff to see. I'll have to ask the judge when they want that to come forward, because they have budgets, so it may be pushed to July and August for that, so.
And one other thing that I had, I think Amy sent out the other day, an updated recommendation on, while we're staying on our House Bill 55 training, just look at that and make sure, we're supposed to have eight hours every, every year?
Two years.
Every two years.
Two years.
So just make sure that you're okay with that, and with, that we don't let some of that expire, because that, you know, they kind of watch that pretty close. We want to make sure that we have our eight hours every, every two years. So if we're like, if you're coming up short or whatever, we can always do some, you know, you can look at some videos, you can, you know, go to some other trainings, that kind of thing. We just want to make sure we stay up to date on that, so. Folks, that's, that's everything?
One last thing.
Okay.
Amy admitted she made a mistake. That's, I think, the first time we've heard that.
I'm getting old, my birthday was yesterday, so you know, that one day older, you know, is maybe, getting something.
But what I really want to do is compliment her. There was a lot of research that's gone into everything from the distilleries and barrel warehouses. We had a lot of meetings, and Amy has, as you saw from the presentation, been at the forefront of all of that, and just, I can't compliment her enough on the work that she put into this, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, folks, it's quarter to noon, and we are done, so thank you all for coming today, and we'll see you maybe next month?
Next month.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Well, it wasn't too bad.
All right, sir.
Yes, sir? Now, we're not meeting Thursday night, right?
We're not meeting Thursday night?
About what?
SRC.
No.
Okay. Just want to make sure.